Thank you for coming this evening. My name's councillor Karen McGowan and I'm chairing this meeting. Before I ask other councillors to introduce themselves, I just want to let you know that we will be coming round with a sheet for you to sign in because people come in through different doors, there will be a sheet going around. So if you can just sign to say that you've attended tonight, that would be really helpful to us, so thank you for that. And I'm just going to hand over now to the committee clerk's area to ask her to just do the housekeeping rules.
Thank you, Chair. So before we start, there's just a few housekeeping arrangements to mention. Can we request that mobile phones and other such equipment is switched to silent mode as to not disturb the conduct of the meeting? All doors here past main reception. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live and for subsequent broadcast via the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collected during the webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consenting to be filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recording for webcasting. One final thing to mention, we do have hearing loops available, so if you would like one, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. So can I please ask members and officers around the table to introduce themselves? So, as I said, councillor Karen McGowan, Chair of the South East Plaque.
Round one house, councillor for Baiton.
Councillor Bob McCann, councillor for Baiton.
Jane Falls, local area committee manager for the South East.
Sarah Hyde, Democratic Services.
Councillor Kevin Oxley from Mosworth.
Councillor Brian Lloyd from Burley Ward.
Councillor Tony Downey in Mosborough Ward.
Thank you. Before we proceed with the agenda, I'd like to explain how the meeting will work. We'll deal with the formal business of apologies, declarations and minutes of the last meeting first. There has been a slight change to the agenda items for the meeting tonight, so unfortunately Burley Spa Primary School are unable to attend this evening to get their certificates for the parking scheme, but we will arrange that for another set time. Also, unfortunately due to illness, Sheffield Crap Union are unable to attend tonight and say our apologies to our presentation for the council's master living on the service. The agenda for tonight will be six invitation for officers on Sheffield Low Plan, items and update of master living. Well, there'll be a couple of sessions, invite those present without any questions being submitted. Item for the area man, old, and then de- this budget for a party. Those of the public, they'll be staffed publicly, there is also further questions rather than off. Okay. First item, got folks, councillor, councillor press, of interest, interested in the agenda. Item five, meeting, may I ask, they are so far, at the minute, to the eight, speak tonight, which should be with the wood, should the fall, question, get that on the.
Right, good evening, everybody. My name's Simon Vincent, I'm the strategic planning service manager in the planning service at Sheffield City Council. And I've just come along this evening to just really explain a little bit about the new Sheffield Plan, which is the local plan that covers the whole of the city. It's taken a long time for us to get to this draft plan stage. The consultations started yesterday, so I'm just going to say a little bit about that during this presentation, which shouldn't take too long. So I'm going to explain what the draft Sheffield Plan is, just briefly talk about how it affects South East Sheffield, and then just explain how you can comment and what happens to your comments once the council receives them. And then I'll just finish off by saying a little bit about when the plan will be finalized or what's called adopted, and the process leading up to that. So the draft Sheffield Plan is the statutory local plan for the city. All local authorities are required to produce one. It sets out a vision and framework for future development of the city, and it's the main tool that the council uses to guide decisions on planning applications. So once finalized, planning decisions are expected to be taken in accordance with the plan unless there are other exceptional circumstances. The plan covers the whole city apart from the area that's in the Peak District National Park, ahead from when it's finalized or adopted, and we don't expect the plan to be finalized until 2024. Once it's adopted, the plan will replace the Sheffield Core Strategy, which was adopted in 2009, and the very old Unitary Development Plan from 1998. So the plan, one of the main purposes of the plan is to allocate land or identify land that's to be developed for different uses, things like for housing, for employment in particular, but it also identifies where land should be protected from development. So it identifies the Green Belt boundary, it identifies open space areas that should be protected, and also important wildlife sites. I think one of the perhaps key messages to get across to you is that this plan doesn't propose any change to the Green Belt boundary other than for one site, which I'll refer to in a moment. And I think that was one of the key pieces of feedback that the council received from the issues and options consultation two years ago, was that people felt very strongly about protecting the Green Belt in Sheffield and protecting green open space. So I think the council has listened very carefully to the feedback that was made when we last consulted on the plan, sort of just over two years ago. So the plan will also set new standards or new requirements for design. For example, it will set new space standards for new housing, it will set requirements around reductions in carbon emissions with the aim of being net zero carbon in new development from 2030, and it sets out ambitions for transport and travel, particularly around better public transport and active travel connections. So it links very much to the city council's transport strategy that was produced a couple of years ago. And importantly, it's also used to help secure contributions from developers towards community benefits, so things like affordable housing, contributions towards new schools and health facilities, so the infrastructure that's needed to support the new development in the city. So the plan we're consulting on now, which we've got copies of at the back of the room, it is a big document and it's a technical document, it has to be used in quite a legal setting very often, but there are two main parts to it. Part one, a vision, a spatial strategy, a series of sub-area policies and site allocation. So the parts you might be most interested in are those sub-area policies, so the city is divided up into nine different sub-areas, one of which is the South East, which broadly, although not completely tallies with the local area committee boundary, it's slightly different for planning reasons. So that's the area perhaps you'll be most interested in. Part two are the development management policies, so those are the policies which the council will use to set better standards for design and so on, and which will particularly be used to help the council determine planning applications. There's an annex, annex A, site allocation, a site allocation schedule, which provides more detail on all the allocated sites, and annex B are the parking guidelines. There's a key diagram, which in simple terms shows where the main development is proposed across the city, and the policies map, which we've got printed sheets from the policies map pinned up at the back, it covers the whole city, but that map's very much intended to be used online, and in fact, it's much easier to use it on the council's website because you can turn layers of information on and off to just get the information you want, you're particularly interested in. So if you want to know where all the wildlife sites are in the city, you can just bring that up on the map. And because it's such a technical document, we've also produced a glossary, which tries to explain some of the technical terms which are used within the plan, and it also means that we can be more consistent in the council's decisions it makes on planning applications. There are copies of all the documents in the libraries across the city and at the council first point offices. So how does the plan affect South East Sheffield? I'll just very briefly run through some of the main points around housing, employment and environment. So for housing, there are four strategic housing sites in the South East of the city, so I think some of these will be very familiar to you, so it includes the Swan Development, Scowden, Weakums and Newstead, so the remaining development that's planned there. There is a greenfield site at Woodhouse East for around 250 homes. This is part of a much larger area that was proposed for housing in the Unitary Development Plan, that's been much reduced in this new plan, but nevertheless, we believe it is appropriate to go forward with some development there. There's also some land, Eastern Moor Valley Way, sorry, Eastern Moor Valley, what's sometimes referred to as Althor Beth, and there's about 151 homes proposed there. Norton Aerodrome is the one change to the Green Belt boundary, where we're proposing around 270 homes on a brownfield site in the Green Belt. I should also point out, there is a proposed Gypsy and Traveller site in the South East of the city, which is east of Eckington Way. This is part of a larger employment site, so we believe that we can separate the Gypsy and Traveller site from the housing to the east, and it's likely that site would be for travelling show people rather than for a mainstream Gypsy and Traveller site. So travelling show people currently have a site in the north of the city in Chapel Town which operates very effectively, so these are basically people who operate fairground attractions, which often operate in the city centre or in other parts of the city region. So it's not, we don't envisage that would be a sort of what you might call a mainstream Gypsy and Traveller site, it would almost certainly be for travelling show people. On employment, in the South East of the city, there's over 22 hectares of land allocated for employment, and there are seven employment sites, including five strategic employment sites at Allgrieve Place, on Rotherham Road at Halfway, Deckington Way at Baiton, that's the site I was just referring to, part of which will be for the Gypsies and Travellers. There's the Mosborough Wood Business Park, which is over nine and a half hectares, and there's land at New Street at Holbrook. So they're all really established employment areas, so we don't expect to see a lot of change in terms of the use of land in those areas. In terms of Green Belt and green space, as I say, there's no change to the Green Belt boundary, except to correct errors or change circumstances. There is land north of Mosborough Moor, which we're intending to add to the Green Belt because the boundary there doesn't follow any clear feature on the ground, so we are proposing to add some land to the Green Belt there. And I think something which I know a number of people in this room are supportive of has been the designation of Althor Fields as a local wildlife site and a local green space, so that is a proposal within the plan and is shown on the map there. The local green space designation effectively gives the land the same protection as Green Belt, so it is quite a step forward in protecting that land. In terms of other policies and proposals, the plan supports the vitality and vibrancy of district centres, Crystal Peaks and Woodhouse. There are proposals for upgrades to the Barrow Hill Rail Line, which runs between Sheffield and Chesterfield, with new stations proposed at Baiton and at Waverley. I think there's a good chance that that will happen sooner rather than later, that some of the work around that has been developing quite well. And the plan identifies a mass, what we call a mass transit corridor linking the South East of the city to the city centre, and there are a number of these sort of mass transit corridors which will be the focus for investment in better public transport, better cycle routes and better pedestrian facilities. So I think those are sort of important benefits in terms of transport. Just to finish off, in terms of public consultation, the consultation period runs until the 20th of February. We're asking respondents to tell us whether the plan does four things really, does it meet future development needs and protect the environment, is it properly justified, have we provided the right, have justified the plan, is it deliverable, will it be effective, is it economically viable, and finally, is it consistent with government planning policy? So if you're making representations, try and focus on those things which are about, is it properly justified, will it do what you want it to do in terms of protecting the environment or delivering the development that this part of the city needs? Now, after the public consultation, the council may propose amendments to the plan, but those amendments will be submitted to the government with the draft plan, and it will be left to the planning inspector to decide whether those amendments should be made. So it's a little bit different from perhaps other consultations that you might have experienced in the past, where the council just alters a document following a consultation, this will be down to an independent inspector to decide ultimately what amendment should be made. So the council can propose amendments in response to objections or comments, but it will be up to the inspector to decide whether those amendments should be made. In terms of the steps towards finalizing the plan, following the public consultation, we expect the plan to be submitted to the government around July this year. Planning inspector is appointed immediately after that submission, and then the examination of the plan starts straight away by the inspector. So the inspector will read all the comments that are made, he or she will read all the documents that are presented by the council to support the plan, and there will be a series of public hearings. So it's important that if you want to have your say at those hearings, that you provide your name and address so the inspector can get in touch with you, to invite you to those hearings, which will probably be around autumn this year. The hearings will probably run for two or three weeks at a time, perhaps a month in between, there'll probably be two or three separate sessions later this year or early next year as part of the examination. The inspector then produces a preliminary report, which we expect to receive around summer 2024, and then almost certainly the report will recommend a series of modifications to the plan. And again, those modifications have to be subject to public consultation, which we expect to be summer, autumn 2024, and then the plan will be adopted at the end of 2024. So that brings me to the end of the presentation, I hope that's a useful summary of how you can get involved in the consultation process.
Thank you, Simon. I'm going to ask if anybody from members of the public would like to ask Simon a question, and if you do, if people can, I can see somebody at the back, if you can just say where you're from, your name and where you're from, please, that'd be really helpful. So I can see Gillian.
Well, we've already got one at Holbrook, so apologies if I've missed something while I was sat at the back, has that been revamped, has it been closed?
The existing site would remain, so there are two existing Gypsy and Traveller sites in Sheffield. One is the Long Acres site at Holbrook, and there's also one at Redmires in the south, sort of southwest of the city really. So those would remain, and they meet the needs, largely meet the needs of existing Gypsies and Travellers. We are looking at the scope to extend, to do a small extension to the Redmires, the existing Redmires site, which would meet the need that the council is required to provide for travellers who travel for work, basically. So legally, there's a legal requirement for the council to meet that need. The other need that hasn't been met is for the travelling show people. So at the moment, they've got a very cramped site in Chapel Town, which operates without any problems at all, as far as we're aware, but they need more space, and they've been looking for a site for a long time, and we think this site meets the criteria that we've been using to select sites, and this is the best site.
Just off Eckington Way.
Yeah, so there would be a new access probably off Eckington Way, but most of the site there would be developed for probably light industry, it would have to be employment uses that are compatible with the adjoining housing, so it wouldn't be anything noisy or that creates disturbance for residents.
I'm just interested to know where the Audi is at Drake House. Point, and this is from like an employee sort of point of view, is on the Long Acres estate, we have a lot of fly tip in there, and predominantly it comes from the gypsy camp. So will you make some provision to stop that happening up at Drake House as well?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I think this is, it would be quite a different sort of setup in terms of the travelling show people are essentially business people who operate fairground rides and so on, I mean, they happen to live in mobile homes, but I don't think, you know, it doesn't cause any problems in Chapel Town, and we wouldn't envisage it would cause problems here.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to ask questions? Yes. And councillors, when you're asking questions, can you please remember to use your microphones because it's not being picked up by the cameras?
Hiya, can you hear me? Yeah, okay. You mentioned about site S in Althor. Now, the first question I have about that is, when they were first brought out, there was C, D, E and F, then F was dropped out, I believe it was dropped out because you couldn't get access to the road at the top because it was thought that it would be too dangerous. So the first question is, where are you going to get access to this site? Is it going to come through site E, or how are you going to get access to it?
Access is still an issue that would need to be looked at, but I would expect it to come off the main road, it wouldn't come through site E definitely, it would come off the main road.
What about the fire brigade at the top? You put a fire station just there, I doubt if you'd get it past. There's a lot of problems, I suppose they could come up less. But the next thing is, you've mentioned that you want to build 150-some-odd houses there. The site is only the size of site E, which has 74 houses on. Are you building high-rise or what are you going to do?
No, it wouldn't be high-rise in that location, but it might be a mix of housing of different sizes, so we might expect to see some smaller units, there might be a small number of.
The matchbox size, they are horrendous.
Yeah, well, the new housing that will be built would have to comply with the new space standards that the plan would introduce, so that will be an improvement in terms of a lot of the housing that we're seeing developed, or have seen developed in the city by private developers across Sheffield over the last sort of 10 years or so.
Are you aware that you are proposing to build on the Althor Grassland and Grazing Project, which is part of the Althor Heritage and Nature Trail?
So Althor Beth, as you say, was part of a whole series of sites at Althor, which were considered for housing in the Unitary Development Plan. We did look at whether some of that land could be taken, de-allocated effectively as part of the new plan, this was probably about 10 years ago when we consulted on the first steps towards producing this new local plan, actually, it was 10 years ago, so it's taken a long time. During that period, national planning policy has changed quite a lot, and so there's a big emphasis on delivering more housing, and one of the decisions the councillors had to take is whether or not to build on Green Belt land, which is designated as Green Belt, or to allow some development to take place on greenfield sites, which is not Green Belt. Now, Althor Beth is not, it's not Green Belt, it is a greenfield site, but we have to show that we're maximizing all opportunities to deliver new homes within the existing built-up area of Sheffield to satisfy the planning inspector.
To the planning inspector, I suggested that they move, I meant homes move its thing to Norton Aerodrome. Sheffield City Council barrister said he thought it was a good idea. I explained that we're already getting funding from the government for Althor, from Natural England, for the Althor Heritage and Nature Trail, and also there is funding to redevelop the Norton Aerodrome. Sheffield City Council barrister, Guy Williams, thought it was an extremely good idea. People are there, or we've got names of them, I'll pass them on to you, didn't seem to think so. So the thing is, you are destroying grassland if you go ahead with this proposal.
Yeah, I mean, we've had to balance a number of different objectives, we've had to balance a number of different objectives in setting out the development proposals in the plan, one of which is, if we'd met the full government housing need figure, we'd have had to build 52,000 homes across Sheffield over the next 17 years.
Can I just stop you just two minutes because I've got a lot of other people that want to come in as well? One last question then, please.
I also said, explained at the meeting, that, can you just throw me off what I was going to say now? What was the thing now?
Question afterwards with Simon, or we can come back to you when I've just asked some other people? Okay, thank you. So I think it was done, did you indicate?
So I think it's great the fact that the council have actually put some literature out for people who are suffering with the cost of living and the fuel crisis, it's good the fact that we've got some information going out there for people that need it. Can I just ask, with the builds, these new builds that are coming on, is there going to be, are we going to be looking at more insulation, solar energy, anything else going in, or is it just going to be the basic minimum standards? Are we looking to actually, or par gain in Sheffield and make sure that the new houses that are coming into play are actually fit for, you know, 25, 30 years into the future, looking at how the fuel crisis is hitting people now? And this isn't going to stop, this is going to continue, are we actually going to be looking into the future and actually making sure that the houses are more insulated and that we're using renewable energy to sustain those houses?
So the plan includes a policy which will require all new development to reduce carbon emissions by 75% from 2025, and be net zero carbon from 2030, which is in line with the council target that was set as part of the climate emergency. We would like to be moving faster than that, but we have to balance, under national planning policy, we have to balance a number of different priorities. Now, we've had a lot of debate with councillors about whether we could go faster, but one of the things we also want to try and do for people is deliver more affordable housing in the city. So one of the things we balance very carefully is all the policies in the plan, many of them have an impact on the cost of building, and we have to show that the plans we're putting forward are deliverable and are economically viable. So we've had a piece of work done, which has looked at the impact of all the policies on the viability of development, and what that piece of work tells us is that if we were to go net zero carbons straight away in Sheffield from, say, as soon as the plan is adopted at the end of 2024, that wouldn't be viable unless we didn't deliver any affordable housing in the city at all, because of the cost of delivering affordable housing to the developers. So we've had to balance a number of different objectives. The plan will have to be reviewed every five years, and I think, so certainly by 2029, we would expect a lot of the technology to have got a lot cheaper, particularly air source heat pumps to be a lot cheaper for people to install. So at that point, we think we will be in a better position to move towards being net zero carbon from 2030. But it has been a balance, and I'll absolutely honest with you about that, in terms of we would like to move faster, and the best way of doing it would be for the government nationally to change the building regulations nationally, and at the moment, you know, Sheffield had different policies to other places, development would just go elsewhere. So I think, you know, we're going as fast as we think we can based on the evidence we've got in front of us, but we would like to go faster. So I'd absolutely share your concerns about, you know, delivering more energy efficient homes and cheaper, homes that are cheaper to heat for people, absolutely is the right way to be going, but we would really push the government to do more nationally really on that as well.
And then just answer that, I was going to say, air source heat pumps, which don't, on the face of it, they are very expensive to put in, and the payback isn't as good isn't as good as we'd like. But the focus really wants to be on insulation. You can insulate a home now so that it costs a fantastically reduced rate. You're talking, you know, two thirds off what people are paying now to heat their homes. And if we concentrate more on not using more energy, but actually insulating it so people aren't using the energy in the first instance, would be, you know, the best way to look at it.
Yeah, I mean, absolutely insulation is really, really important. And in fact, the changes to the building regulations that were made last year will result in about a 30% reduction in carbon emissions and most of that is achieved through better insulation. So new housing that is built from this year, that's getting planning permission this year and is getting building control approval this year, will have to comply with those new standards and will have the best insulation really that you can get. You could put more layers of insulation on and it wouldn't really make a great deal of difference. It's gone really as far as we can do in terms of reducing carbon emissions in new developments through insulation. So the next step will be to use air source heat pumps and solar panels on roofs to reduce the regulated energy that's used in buildings going forward. We do expect air source heat pumps to get a lot cheaper over the next three years. So the advice we've had from consultants is that, you know, they will get cheaper. It's a bit like when condensing boilers were introduced sort of 20 years ago. They were very expensive when they first came in, but very quickly the government encouraged manufacturers to produce cheaper condensing boilers and those were quickly reduced in price. So we do expect air source heat pumps to get cheap.
Thank you. Is the lady here?
One is just to go on record to say, and I know we spoke, thank you for listening and taking on board all the evidence that we provided about Althorpe Fields. We do appreciate that and we're absolutely chuffed a bit, you know, about it in the local plan. The second one was OAG and Dawn and others were part of the Nature Recovery Sheffield. And I know there was a declaration of a nature emergency, gosh, was it 2020, 2021? I can't remember. I just wondered what, you know, how that is incorporated into the local plan, please.
So one of the biggest changes that's going to happen is around biodiversity net gain, which will require all developments to show at least a 10% benefit in terms of biodiversity. And that will apply nationally from November this year. So the plan talks about, you know, applying that biodiversity net gain. One of the things that, wherever possible, that biodiversity net gain should be on the development site. In some cases though, that won't be possible. So for example, you know, sort of high-rise apartments in the city centre, it's going to be quite difficult to achieve the sort of net gain that you might want to otherwise achieve. So some of the net gain will be off-site and the work that's going on around the local nature recovery networks is mapping out those networks and identifying opportunity sites where money from developments can be used, from the biodiversity net gain can be used to improve habitats right across the city. So we're looking at how that mechanism will work and we'll be producing some supplementary planning guidance that will sit alongside the local plan, which will explain the process in more detail.
Thank you. I've just got a couple more on here. So is the gentleman behind? Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Ken Wetter, a Beaton resident. How will the mass travel corridors work and to what extent will they end or help to solve the traffic congestion in our part of the city?
Yeah, I mean, obviously with the level of developments that is proposed across the city, transport is critical to ensuring that, you know, the city doesn't grind to a halt. So we're still doing some transport modelling to look at the cumulative impact of all the development that's proposed and we're producing a separate infrastructure delivery plan, which will set out specific proposals to tackle some of the transport problems in different parts of the city. But in terms of the mass transit corridors, the detail of those will be worked up through specific schemes that will come forward through the Transport Planning Service within the council. And there'll be specific consultation with communities about those, about what's the best way of achieving those objectives. It is about better public transport. It might be about bus priority routes. It is also about cycle routes, better pedestrian facilities, but the specifics will vary from corridor to corridor. In some corridors, it might be about actually directing cycle routes off the main roads onto the network of smaller roads and identifying a network of routes along the wider corridor rather than on the main road itself. In other cases, it might be a cycle lane on the main road. So it will depend on the location, but the details of specific schemes will follow on after the plan's adopted.
Thank you again, Simon. I think the slider here, yeah.
Good evening. My name is Jane Finney and I'm from Mosborough Wood. I just want to ask a couple of questions. Can you quantify the area that has been adopted to greenbelt of Mosborough Moor, please?
I don't know the figure off the top of my head, but it's a fairly large area, but it's because the boundary at the moment. Hmm, 12 hectares, maybe 10 or 12 hectares.
And another question was, yeah, are there any plans to initiate some electric plug-ins for vehicles on these main highways?
Yeah, so, yeah, so, I mean, in fact, the building regulations nationally have changed recently. So there are now requirements for electric vehicle charging points and the cabling to be put in for all new developments. The parking guidelines form part of the plan. If you have a look at those, they give you the detailed requirements for different types of development. And the Sheffield plan goes a bit further than the building regulations, particularly in terms of non-residential development. I can't remember off the top exactly what the figures are, but it's a certain number of charging points per parking, for the number of parking spaces. So it is now effectively a requirement nationally anyway, but we're going a little bit further with some of the requirements in the plan.
Thank you. I'm just going to ask if there's any councillors that want to ask a question and then we'll move it because we've got another presentation and more questions that people could ask. So Gail.
Thank you. I want to take you back to the traveller's site because this is already public knowledge around Beaton and Mosborough and I've had a few emails about it. So first question is, you say it's only for showman travellers, but how are you going to stop any other gypsies from using that site? How can you reassure, how could we reassure local people that will live close to that that it will only be for showmen? How would that work? And why did we get all the way from Chapel Town to the South East before we found another space in Sheffield to put this site?
So it's very likely there would be, the site would be leased or sold to the business. They're effectively a business, a number of families that operate the fairground rides, I say in Sheffield and other parts of South Yorkshire. So it would be a sort of property transaction with them to enable them to live there and operate their business there. So in a way, it's no different to the council leasing land to any other business really. So it would be restricted to them. We've done, you know, a wide search right across the city to try and find suitable sites. And, you know, we discussed a number of options with members over the summer last year. We discounted a number of options. We had a series of criteria we used to determine which were the best sites and this site came out as the top scoring site.
Can I explain?
Yeah, I mean, without taking a lot of time now, I think the best thing to do would probably provide you with a list of the criteria we used and I think, and then you can respond to those and indicate whether you agree with them or not. And I think that goes for anybody really, you know, present, in objecting to that site, present the evidence as to why you think it's inappropriate and why we've got it, we may have got it wrong, you know, this is a consultation and so we want to hear from people about whether that is the right site. And if people have got alternative suggestions, then again, we'd like to hear about them.
Thank you. I think councillor Lodge wants to make a comment.
Yeah, if I just comment on that. You'll see Faris Fun Fairs and like the Christmas market was put on by William Percival, Faris Fun Fairs, you'll see them around Sheffield, they are Sheffield people. He's got the lease on the site at Chapel Town, I understand. The Christmas market and the bars and things that he has, so if you saw the Alpine Lodge and things like that, all together, he's got 18 trailers in that site and the site, they lease that land and that's where they store a lot of the things as well as their rides that they have, that they have out in the city centre. And I think that's the, it's very emotive when you see it down as a traveller's site and things, but I think it's understanding what it is and I think, as Simon said there, if they're leasing it, it's operated and they're managing it themselves a little bit more than just seeing it as an open traveller's site. But if you think about the summer, the beach that they've put on in the Peace Gardens and things like that, and they bring things in there and all the cabins they have for the Christmas fair, the bars, et cetera, this is one of the sites that they're looking at because their current site is now chock a block with things and I think they're looking to expand. They need some more space. So I think it's, hopefully it reassures people it's not going to be an open site for travellers coming in and out.
Thank you for that. Okay. Oh, sorry, sorry, Kate, to come to you.
Thank you. So I've got a few questions carrying on from that. If it's only for travelling showmen, do we know when they'll be in the area? Is there like a calendar of that? Anybody who's been to Crystal Peaks over the Christmas period will know that the car park can get rammed in there. So if we have a calendar of when people are going to be in the area, could we even use it as like an overflow car park when it's not being used to store trailers and things like that?
It's not going to be a sort of site where they come and go. They will live there permanently. It's a permanent site. So they will have, it's like, it will be sort of static caravans on the site essentially. They're not going to be driving on back and to with the caravan. So it's a bit like a sort of, almost like you could say, it's like you would see with a holiday caravan park with permanent caravans on the site. They won't be taking them on back and to off the site. They just happen to live in caravans.
So on to a different subject. I'm delighted about Althorpe, about the site on there, and I think we must commend the work that's gone in from the local groups as well. It takes a lot of work to write that massive report. So it's good that it's been designated as local green space, which I think is a first for Sheffield. And you said that that should have the same legal grounding as the greenbelt. So why not greenbelt? I'm just worried that if the local plan's up for review every five years, it could then, could it change?
You're right. I mean, it has the same, well, in legal terms, it has the same level of protection as greenbelt. We consider very sort of long and hard about changes to the greenbelt boundary and to some extent, there's a tactical decision by the council here not to make wholesale changes to the greenbelt boundary. And that's because there are lots of developers out there who will be arguing that land in the greenbelt should be released for development. The council adds land to the greenbelt or alters the greenbelt in lots of different places. It adds ammunition to those developers to say, well, the council's made a change here, we can make, therefore we should be allowed to make a change over here. So it's really on legal advice that tactically this is a better thing for the council to do to resist the pressure we will get from developers and house builders to release large chunks of greenbelt across the city. So that's a conscious decision. Whenever a plan is reviewed, we will have to take account of the development needs that are failing at the time and that will be dependent to some extent on national policy. And the government has changed national policy around housing needs several times over the last few years. And so we'll have to take that into account. We think there is a site-specific justification for releasing land at Norton, but we think tactically it's better not to release or add land to the greenbelt in other locations. And I think, you know, we just want to reiterate, we were really impressed with the submissions around the, you know, the local green space designation and the local wildlife site designation at Althorpe. It's an exemplary piece of work really in terms of how to present community, you know, how a community can present evidence, let's say. It's really good. So, you know, that does give really strong protection to that land and we don't expect there will be any objection to that because the land is owned by the council. If it was privately owned land, you may, we'd probably certainly get some objections to it, but I'm sure that, you know, that won't be the case.
Yeah. Bob?
Yeah, just going back to the traveller's site, which, if you give me a description of it, it's not actually a traveller's site as such, it's a business site. So why have we put the name traveller's site on it? It's, you know, it's a connotation that goes with it that's caused a problem. So can we find a better way of describing it?
Yeah, I mean, we have to, there are a number of different groups, if you like, within the gypsy and traveller community. Travelling show people are one of those groups and there are what you might call the mainstream travellers. And then you've also got new age travellers as well, some of whom are currently camped on, I think, Club Mill Road near Parkwood Springs in the north of the city. They were evicted from Parkwood Springs and they moved down onto Club Mill Road. We have, when we do our gypsy traveller need assessment, we have to take account of all those different communities and so they are classed as gypsies and travellers under the planning definition and so that's why we call it gypsy traveller's site. But yeah, I accept it is perhaps misleading in terms of the use. It is, it's a business use where people just happen to live on the site really.
Thank you very much. I'm going to call the line under it now because we've got two more presentations to give. But thank you very much and thank you for taking all the questions, Simon. If anybody else got questions for Simon afterwards, he will be around. It probably ain't me saying that, but he will be around at the back, so please go and have a word. All right. Thanks. Thank you, Simon. So now we've got a presentation on the cost of living support services update. So this is Alex Westran. Westran? Thank you very much. Thanks.
Hi, everyone, and thanks for having me. So I'm Alex Westran. I'm from Sheffield City Council's Cost of Living Support Hub and I'm going to tell you a bit about the services that we offer and the work that we're carrying out with the community involuntary sector, some of the offers that are available for individuals and sort of some of the pieces of work that we've done to support community involuntary sector workers and frontline workers in Sheffield. So today I'm going to cover an introduction to the Cost of Living Support Hub and give you a bit of context behind where we came from and then just run through some of the pieces of work as I've mentioned. So Welcome Places, the Community Support Helpline, the Household Support Fund, the Cost of Living Toolkit, which is for frontline workers. We've got some postcards and leaflets that will be going out to people in the city and frontline workers. We've reformed the website, so I'll just explain some of those changes and then just some of the training modules that we've put together for frontline workers that are supporting people in the community. So the Cost of Living Support Hub, to give a bit of context, originally we were the Covid Response Hub and as the Covid response kind of died down and some of the sort of bigger pieces of work such as testing and vaccination started to reduce, the work that we were doing was very much based around the financial impacts of Covid and how Covid was affecting people financially. Then the cost of living crisis, you know, became prominent and so we transitioned into the Cost of Living Support Hub in summer of last year. So over the past six months, we've kind of been planning all of the different things that we think that we need to support people in the city and those facing hardship. So we've got kind of a couple of things within there. We've got a set of project support staff that kind of do some of the bigger pieces of work in some of the organisations. And then we've got an operational team which deliver the community support helpline and the household support fund and, you know, kind of process applications for crisis grants and things like that. One of the kind of underpinning pieces of work that we've put together to try and sort of, you know, give us a response in lots of different parts of the city is Welcome Places. Now, Welcome Places were largely kind of, you know, facilities that were already there and already operating. So community centres, family centres, libraries and we've got TARA facilities and, you know, lots of other kind of community buildings that can be used as a place that people can go if they, you know, need somewhere warm to go, you know, people are struggling with heating, if somebody needs somewhere warm to go, just somewhere to go and see somebody with a friendly face, get a cup of tea. You know, there might be activities put on in those welcome. activities put on in those welcome spaces, but also people can access support and advice within those settings, so a lot of the other pieces of work that I'll be talking about in a little bit, you'll be able to go along to a welcome place or if somebody's suffering hardship, they can be directed to a welcome place where they can go and speak to somebody and get help with the hardship that they're facing. Yeah, so that's the Welcome Places offer, we've got, I think there's over a hundred sites across the city at the minute, there's a map which is, there's a link on the presentation which will circulate, which is hosted by VAS and that kind of, it shows you where all the sites are, and there's also a description of what you can find within that welcome space as well, within the map detail. The other kind of big sort of support function that we've got is the Community Support Helpline, now that was in operation throughout Covid, it was kind of the first thing that we set up as part of the humanitarian response to Covid, and we did a lot of kind of things like food, food support, medication collection and that kind of thing and, you know, providing advice and support through Covid. It's since become the Financial Support Helpline, so if people, if an individual needs support or if you've got, if there's a frontline worker who's supporting a member of the community and you think that they need to kind of, you know, speak to somebody to find out what support's available, the staff who man the Community Support Helpline have all that knowledge, they can access information about food banks, energy support, financial support and carry out things like benefits maximisation and, you know, generally provide any kind of advice and support that might be needed. The team that manage the Community Support Helpline also manage the Household Support Fund. Now the Household Support Fund is a fund that's been provided by the Department for Work and Pensions, it's there to help people who need support with food, energy, essentials connected to energy and wider essentials. Anybody can apply for the Household Support Fund, we receive about £5.2 million every six months to distribute. We distribute it in a couple of ways, so one of the ways is by supporting those who are eligible for free school meals, we just provide free school meal vouchers in school holidays, so that's one of the ways that we provide it, the main way that we distribute always through the application scheme. The application form is available on the council's website and you can also call the Community Support Helpline to get support in applying if you find it difficult to use the web form etcetera, or if you need support with applying for any other reason. We've also got a number of trusted assessors, so members of the community involuntary sector and organisations such as Citizens Advice and Shelter and local housing associations can all act as trusted assessors if, so if they've got somebody that they're working with, then they can also put an application in on behalf of that individual. The next piece of work is a frontline worker toolkit, so this is designed for anybody who might work in any part of the city, so we've rolled it out to the Department for Work and Pensions job centres, to staffing in schools and doc surgeries and partner organisations in the community voluntary sector across the city. It's also been rolled out to Sheffield City Council staff. Now this is basically a tool that brings together all of the different types of support that somebody might need as part of hardship support, so, you know, mental health and wellbeing support, that information on, you know, how you can save energy or the different energy support schemes that are available, obviously information about the Household Support Fund and other financial support that's available. There's also information in there for like public spaces, so there's posters, leaflets and things, the principal resources that you can hand out or use to signpost people to the appropriate support, and there's also lots of training modules in there that, you know, kind of topic-specific training courses in there on things like gambling awareness, suicide prevention, illegal money lending, lots of sort of different things that might come up as part of sort of financial hardship, but you might, as a frontline worker it might not be something that you know too much about and so we wanted to put together some sort of shorts, sharp snappy videos that you can kind of, you know, kind of get a bit of knowledge on the subject matter if you need it. At the minute we've got a leaflet that's just going through the com sign-off process, so this has been produced with specific local information and kind of brings everything in together in kind of a, something that we can get out to a lot of people, so that's about to be signed off and should be distributed very soon. I think we'll be trying to get into things like council tax bills so that we can get into to every resident, so it's something that we want to get on every doorstep ultimately, so that should be coming soon. And then the next one, the Neighbourhood Postcard is again a tool for frontline workers which is kind of, if you're working sort of remotely or field-based, then it's something that you can use with a mobile device to kind of scan a QR code and it'll take you into a whole host of information like the frontline worker toolkit and that kind of things that you've got quick access when you need it ultimately. The final thing I want to run through is just we've reformed our webpages on the Sheffield City Council website, so we had lots of information in lots of different places that was financially based and we've got council tax information, benefits information, the kind of crisis grant info, and lots of other info which was kind of fragmented in lots of different places. So we've brought that into one place on the website, on the Cost of Living Hub, you can access it through that link, and also if you go to the council's main webpage, then the first button at the top of the page now says Cost of Living, such a reason, really easy to access. If you're working in the community and you want to direct people to it, it should be easy to signpost to it just by directing people to the main council website.
Thank you very much.
That's all right.
Is that it, sorry?
That's it, yeah, yeah, I've run through training modules already, thank you.
Thank you for that, that's really interesting, thank you. Has anyone got any questions about what you've just heard, or if anyone, you're going to be around Alex afterwards? Yeah, so if anybody wants to have a word afterwards or needs any information, I'm sure you'll be able to help, so thank you very much. Okay, so we're on to public questions and petitions, we've received no questions in advance except for I have received a question handed in tonight. First want to apologise to Mr Meredith because he handed questions in at the last meeting and we didn't get you the answers, so I promise you, a promise from me, we will make sure you get answers to that and to what you've answered in tonight, okay? So thank you very much. Has anyone else got any questions other than what we've already had tonight on anything?
Mr Teadsdale asked a question at the last meeting about local enterprise, I can't remember the code, we still haven't got any further information through from the government on where these were, there's been a change obviously in things in the government where they are, so once I do, because I did say I'd get the information back out, we're still trying to get the full information out there. We've got a rough idea but not enough really to warrant sending out as a response, but it was in the minutes, so I just thought we'd knock it to you.
Okay, thanks for that Brian. Okay, any members of the public got any questions? Yes? Could you just say, can you just come to the microphone and say who you are and where you're from? Thank you, you just need to press the red button.
Hello, I'm Glynnis Chapman. I had some questions raised at the last meeting because I was absent, but since then my questions are all about the development of the old site for Noel Hill, the old people's home that's been derelict for over nearly six years now. And only today I actually got a letter in my letterbox, because I live across the road from Noel Hill, and saying that we've had things on the local forum saying that the land was to be cleared and redeveloped for twenty-five spaces for people with probably escaping abuse, but here on the letter I've got today says it will be twenty-five eligible households for people who have become homeless. Well, it's a big site, but a household can be one person or four people, is it going to be a hundred people on there or just twenty-five homeless people?
Thank you, thank you for the question.
Yeah, thank you Glynnis, yeah, yeah, all right. Yes, what it is, is we were all on this some while ago, Gail and Kevin.
I object, by the way.
For people off the street or people that, what am I trying to say, people who are misusers, it's going to be, it's going to be a twenty-five, as I understand it, it's going to be twenty-five single units, right, and it's going to be temporary accommodation for people who are waiting for a home, right, it's not like homeless as you bring off the street, that kind of thing. It will be, it will be, it's going to be two years in the making, it has to go to, it'll be going out to public consultation and it has to go through the planning process, okay, so, and it's going to be two years in the making because that's the length of time it's going to take. It will also have twenty-four hour people on site, so it's not just a site that's left open for homeless people as you would think to come and go as they please, it'll be monitored and it'll be, as I say, twenty-four hour, twenty-four hour support all the time.
Therefore, if you're in twenty-four hour staffing and security, you're expecting problems. I mean, why would you have twenty-four hour security and everything there if you weren't thinking something's going to be going wrong then? And you're putting it in a place where there is nothing, there's a bus stop and one shop, nothing else, putting people in there. I mean, and, not twenty-five people, twenty-five units, if you're leaving for a family place because of abuse, more often than not you've got children, are you putting children in there as well? I mean, it's just, you know, bad planning.
Yeah, if I just, I'm the co-chair of the Finance Subcommittee, it went through the approval process through the Finance Subcommittee last week, it's one and two bedroom units because there may be people with children, so it's one and two, there'll be a number of one bedroom, there'll be a number of one and two bedroom units in there because of people escaping from abuse, domestic violence and things like that, so it's that, it's supported, so it's not security, it's support for the people going through, and it's almost like a step to getting them into permanent accommodation, so it's short-term accommodation for people to help them through that and progress through to get into the...
We all know there is a shortage of accommodation in Sheffield, so this temporary could become a lot longer.
Well, this is, this is one of the reasons why we're looking to develop it because there is a shortage of temporary accommodation as well, and so people are put into bed and breakfast, and so it's not an ideal situation, people put to bed and breakfast or bedsits if they've got children, so this is trying to take some of that pressure off that's in there and support these people to try and get them through. We do have a responsibility to house people across the council, and so this is just part of the overall planning on supporting the people across the city. But we are continuing to build affordable housing all over the city, you've seen the plans that are up there, that we're already looking and more housing is being developed and I think we see stuff come to the council every, every planning meeting these days, there's more and more things coming through.
So has planning been passed for this, have you already made your minds up? Nothing could go on?
No, it will have to go through the planning process. What happened last week is that the land was appropriated back into the council housing revenue account. It was previously held by Cheff Care and they relinquished the lease last year, so it's taken a while to bring it back through and they've relinquished the lease, they moved out of it, but they still held the lease for it. Now it's obviously been subject to vandalism and problems for the residents down there, and it was a question I asked and I said how quickly they'll be looking to get this demolished, to take that hotspot away, and they anticipate to be on site very, very soon, be using the council's emergency demolition process to get that secured and get the building down to take away that problem that's there, but it still has to go through the formal planning process, so it's not, the plans are being worked up and developed and it'll go out to formal consultation that the ward councillors and everybody else will have the opportunity to comment on it.
Right, because I mean, standing at the bus stop on Street Fields, we have lots and lots of conversations about it and nobody knew anything until we got this letter today, and it, you know, it's not good.
Unfortunately it's a process it goes through to bring it, to bring it back into the ownership, into the council housing side of things, so they can then use it, so it's appropriating it for housing use because the cost of that and everything spent on housing has to come through, the housing revenue account has to be spent on housing and those sort of facilities, so it was a process that we went through last week to enable, to get it demolished and then to start looking at making better use of the site in there. So, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that, asking a question. Okay, anyone else got a question? No? Okay then, I'm going to move over to Jane now, who's going to go through the budget report.
Thank you Chair. I'd like to just go through and bring you up to date with what the current spend and allocation is for the £100,000 that was attached to the community plan that we pulled together. So just for a little bit of background for those that may not know, we consulted around two years ago to look at and identify key themes and priorities that were important to the tenants and residents and community groups and communities within the South East area. The three key themes that emerged from there was transport and highways, environmental issues, crime and community safety, and as I've just mentioned, we had £100,000 to spend on those priorities to address these issues. As the committee, you looked at those themes and an allocation of that £100,000 was broken down and attached accordingly, and we subsequently had working groups within the various themes to look at and develop those priorities. So within the transport and highways theme, £59,000 of that was allocated of the £100,000, and one of the key things from there was that a real highlight that came out was around speeding vehicles throughout the whole of the South East, so we gave an undertaking that we would undertake a speeding review in all four of the wards and £10,000 was allocated to each ward to help address issues with speeding vehicles, and that was to place orders around polycarbonate signs, vehicle activation signs, speed strip surveys etcetera. We also purchased a speed gun, you're authorised for a speed gun to be purchased, and that's held with our colleagues within South Yorkshire Police at Moss Way, and we undertake speed watch surveys, sorry, speed watch, speed watch schemes out in the community, and they've been going on from around Christmas time, just before Christmas, and we receive that information through. We also allocated £500 for the Good Bad Parking Scheme, that was for the junior schools throughout the South East area that wanted to take part, and we worked with our colleagues from Community Safety to go out and work with the children around what's classed as good parking and what's classed as bad parking, and they developed a parking pass as such and they will go out. It works very well, it works better than if we get parking services out because if people are parked inappropriately, they seem to respond much better to young children than someone in office. So we've currently placed orders of £5,780, we allocated a contingency funding there of £14,000. When we've placed all the orders, which will include the £40,000, the £10,000 per ward, potentially we could have an underspend of just over £13,000 for the transport and highways theme. Within our environmental theme, you allocate £17,000 for that, that was to look at and address initiatives around dog fowling and littering, and we've allocated £2,100 for schemes across the South East to tackle those problems. We were asked to look at putting together an environmental champions group, we've done that, we've had some excellent feedback and involvement from our community, and one of the things that we looked at was that we also wanted to promote environmental awareness, so you agreed that £3,000 of that would be allocated. So you agreed that £3,000 of that would be allocated to work again with our junior schools and the Shirebrook Valley and the Rangers, the Parks and Muddlands Service, to develop an educational scheme to help promote environmental awareness. We also used the contingency fund, which was for around £11,900 when we worked with the group and with yourselves, to look at what other projects we could identify and potentially work on. So some of the things that we've, we will be either placing orders for or have placed orders for within there is around orchard maintenance, that's within the Baiton Ward. We will also be undertaking training for tree pruning, for fruit tree pruning, that will be for community groups, that will be delivered hopefully within the next, well, over the next six months. We've also purchased a wellness totem home, which will be on the green corridor, the S20 green corridor. And we have also allocated funding for local environmental projects for the three wards that haven't received anything specifically, and that will be for the local environmental group to identify those projects. And we also allocated, I think it was £500, for litter picking equipment for the groups that wanted to undertake the Champion House Street initiative that you'd agreed to. Okay? And then lastly, we had our crime and community safety theme and you had £24,000 allocated there. It seems, it doesn't seem as if it would fit appropriately in there, but one of the things when we did the consultation around crime and community safety was around the perceived fear of crime. And when we looked into that further, we actually found that through the Covid period, because people were going out less, the number of groups that they were attending were decreasing, obviously for reasons due to Covid, but actually people's perceived fear of crime was increasing because they weren't going out and they were feeling quite isolated. One of the things that we looked at and worked with one of the forums was to increase the mother and toddler groups across the South East. They had decreased dramatically through the Covid period. And one of the things that we were finding working with our partners was that the Covid babies that were born through the Covid period, the mum would feel completely isolated. So we funded £4,800 to Woodhouse Forum to work with the community groups to increase the number, and I'll bring the report back at the next meeting, their aim was to increase three per ward within a 12-month period. We also allocated £1,000 for addressing the seed fear of crime, and we're working with our colleagues from South Yorkshire Police, and that's to deliver leaflets around keeping your property safe, your vehicles safe, and we're targeting areas where that's currently an issue. There's £4,000 that's allocated for addressing youth provision. And we're working with the European Parliament and with, obviously with yourselves, with the local committee, to understand what it is that our young people within the South East want to see. And there was a contingency fund that left around about £13,000. So with orders not being placed, that left a current underspend within that part of the plan of around £18,200. So within the transport and highways theme and within the crime and community safety theme, if we added the underspend there, sorry, that came to around about £32,020. We had discussions at our informal meeting around, there were requests coming through and it fits a little bit with what Alex talked about earlier, around the cost of living crisis which really rose to the front. At our last meeting in October, we had a presentation and we had Renee from Foodworks, I always get that wrong. And as a group, we looked, you did those suggestions that perhaps we ought to provide training for community groups to help provide support for the cost of living crisis. And then some of the information that was fed back to us was that parents were really struggling, and this came actually from, through the youth cabinet and from some of the focus sessions that we'd had, that parents were struggling with sometimes just the basic stuff around uniform and that some of it was perhaps going to waste and they felt quite awkward about how it could be swapped. So we've worked with some of the schools to look at a uniform swap scheme, which won't place any onus on the school to actually open it and deliver it, and that's to provide sheds and shelving and boxes and it sort of runs itself. And you allocated £2,800 for that. So in summary, we've currently spent £31,380 and we've got orders to be placed for around about £49,000. So the first comment that I wanted to make is that the committee note what our current spend is and what the proposed spend is, and that's in line with consultation events that have taken place and from our subsequent informal like meetings. One of the issues that we discussed at our meeting in December that came out of the crime and community safety theme and subsequent work in a couple of the wards was the need to purchase a CCTV camera. And that was, and that would be a mobile CCTV camera that would be owned by the South East Lark and would be able to be moved around the area and in sort of like hot spotted. And the aim of that, when we talked to our colleagues within South Yorkshire Police and the Community Safety Team is, you tend to find if you put in CCTV, people become aware that that's there and then they find different ways around trying to do whatever they're doing. But if we can move it and target it, we can try and resolve the issue there at that time and then move it. So it'll be owned by the South East Lark and it'll be moved around as and when it's needed. The purchase price of that is £10,078. We need to bring it to this committee because it's over the allocated £5,000 amount that we have delegated authority for. It's for a decision for you to make. And then it's just to highlight that any remaining contingency is moved between those three themes as you would see fit, in line with any further priorities or any further schemes that you would want to be delivered.
Thank you. Thanks, Jane. Can I just ask, do you just want one okay for all of it, or do you want the last three sections okaying by each section?
The movement of the camera, will there be an extra cost to move it or will that, is that all included in the price of the cost of it?
Within the first year, that's included in the price. Following on, there would be, but the actual cost to move it, providing there are the facilities there for it to be mounted to, are minimal costs. I'm looking at it, it's around about £500, it's not an excessive amount.
Yeah, thank you. I think the CCTV is a good idea. What's the process of that? How do we as local members request its use and what sort of timeframe are we looking at for that as well?
So timeframe, for requesting or for moving it?
Yeah.
I think that's something that, the way that it's happened at the minute is through, obviously, information that's come back to us from different areas. So we've currently got an issue in the Burley Ward and the Woodhouse Ward that we've, it's been brought to light through, obviously, working with our colleagues in Community Safety, it's been fed back from the community. And as a result of that, that's why we've looked at this. So it would be, as you would know, if you have any parts of your community coming to you within your ward, we have regular ward meetings, so it would come through there. If you're asking me specifically about a timeframe for it being there, Curtis, I'm not sure, and we'd need to work with our colleagues within Community Safety and Police. Other than what we were saying is ideally, it's short-term primarily because once people are aware that it's there, it stops it initially and it moves it, but then once they're aware that it's there, they try and just get around the cameras there. Is that okay?
Yeah, that's, could it also be used in fly tipping hotspots? Would that count as well?
That's a very good question. I'm not so sure for that. When you're using it for fly tipping, I'd need to take further advice from our colleagues within Environmental Services, but some of the legislation is slightly different and the cameras, the sort of like the information that you have to put out. We can take that, we can pick that up. It was something that we'd asked for, so as a South East Lark, we got £57,000 allocated to us for outside of this £100k for hotspot areas for fly tipping. One of the things that we have requested in there for those hotspot areas is a camera, a mobile camera as well, yeah.
Brian, did you want to come in on that?
Yeah, it's just asking this mobile CCTV to use it for, because, I mean, I suppose it's looking to partners and partners. I suppose it's how do we determine, who makes the decision ultimately at the end? Is it us as the Lark, the committee, to make it? Because, you know, I can see where, we'll have situations where Community Safety may come up with something, the police may come up and request and say we need that there. It may be housing, it may be other sides of things. And I think we just need to develop a protocol. So it's probably something for the officer to go back that we need to decide on, on where the protocol is, because I'm sure we all sit around here as councillors, we can all think of eight or nine spots in our wards, each one of us, well, I'll be there, it'll never be up anyway because it'll be in transit all the time. But I think we just need to develop a protocol, because if other services, I mean, you know, like I'm looking at this, the camera here from Parks, it might be that Parks have got a particular problem, that there was something there. So I think we just need to be clear on how we decide where it's going to go. So I think it's just developing a protocol that we can all agree and allocate it out.
Brilliant, I think that's a really good idea. And we need to work out how we're going to prioritise one area against another, so we will do that. Can I just ask officially for this meeting now, we need to approve this budget?
Yeah.
So is everybody, can we gather show of hands that everybody's happy with the budget?
Yep.
Okay then, so that's been passed. Okay, and we will go away and do a protocol as well. So thanks for that. So that brings us to the end of this meeting. Thank you so much, everybody, for attending, especially on a dark night. Please stay behind, talk to your councillors, they'll be around, and all the officers. So if you've got anything that you want to discuss further, please do. Okay, thank you very much.